Good evening, everyone. August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, six-thirty P. M., this mayor and council regular meeting is now called to order. Roll call, all council members are present, please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nathan, will you pray for us, please?
Lord Jesus, we thank you so much that we get to come here tonight, and, Lord, we thank you for just the opportunity we have to live in the city of Social Circle. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon this community and the incredible citizens that live here as well. And so, Lord, we pray that you would just be honored and glorified in everything that is said and done tonight. Lord, that you would give the council and the presenters, Lord, just the wisdom and the guidance they need to make the right decisions and to say the right words, to communicate what's best for our community as we move forward. We love you, and we pray that you'd just be with our time now. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nathan. Sure is nice to have a pastor on the council. All right, have a few announcements to make. All of these are in the community room that we're in now, so we've got a council meeting tonight. We have a property tax public hearing tonight at six-thirty. We have municipal court, August twentieth at one P. M. Planning Commission, August twenty-sixth, six P. M. We have Labor Day holiday, September first. Council work session is September four, six-thirty P. M. Main Street Commission meeting, September ninth at eight A. M. Historic Preservation Meeting, September ninth, six P. M. And our next council meeting, September sixteen, at six-thirty P. M. We've got a number of presentations. Employee introduction and recognition. Okay. Downtown rundown.
Good evening. I'm gonna start the rundown for this month with a quick wrap-up. Our back-to-school celebration was held on Friday, August the first. We had eighteen vendors that were set up in the middle school gym, offering a variety of games, activities, and prizes for our kids. We had a really great turnout of students, school employees, and the community, and for those of you that don't know, this is an annual celebration for the start of a new school year. And then on Saturday, August the second, we held the Social Circle Birthday Celebration at Stevens Park. The crowd was pretty slim in the beginning because we had rained that afternoon, but started to build up more as we got closer to the fireworks. And so, we had a great concert, lots of vendors, and we had a really great fireworks show that night. Applications for the thirty-first Annual Social Circle Friendship Festival will close in just a few weeks. We're already over halfway full for the Friendship Festival, and we're expected to have close to a hundred vendors for this festival. Applications posted this week for this year's Christmas parade. Last year, we had thirty-one participants in the parade, and the theme for this year is favorite Christmas song. So, we hope to have close to fifty participants this year for the parade. Coffee and Conversations will be held on Tuesday, August the twenty-sixth, at nine A. M. at Morris Realty. Their office is located at one thirteen Adam Street, and all are welcome to attend this monthly networking event. And then lastly, Colony Refers started with tearing the roofs off of one-twenty, one-twenty-four, and one-thirty-six this week. So, the project is expected to last about six weeks, and then I have some new facade designs for those buildings that I'll be presenting to you guys, merrysing. And that's all I have for the rundown tonight.
Any questions for Amber?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. All right, next up, we have the Social Circle Police Department State Certification Recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council members, city manager, I'm gonna bring up a gentleman from the Georgia Association Chiefs of Police. We recently went through our recertification process with them, and something that Chief Oliver started during his tenure here. I'll let Mr. Denzmore speak a little bit about it, but I can tell you that it's not an easy process by any stretch of the imagination. And before he speaks, I just want to recognize two of our folks, Ms. Carrie Bennett and Captain Rose. If it had not been for those two people, we probably wouldn't seen our certification this year. When we came in, we had a transition of people. The person that was managing that program left us, so we had a gap of about nine to ten months where that was, the certification wasn't being handled. So, when Ms. Bennett and Captain got together, they were able to get everything together for our inspection. Mr. Denzmore, who is right behind me, is the program manager for all of the certifications for the state of Georgia underneath the Georgia Association Chiefs of Police. He is the one that we all go to for our certification, and he's the one that ultimately manages the program. Mr. Denzmore?
Yes. So, yeah, just to give you a little background on the process. It is a process that identifies the agency from how they hire people, administrative, patrol functions, investigations, the whole gamut. There is a hundred and forty-six standards, but most of those standards have several bullet points that also have to be complied with. And it covers nine chapters, and again, it covers every facet of police operations. So, takes the chief willing to stand up and say, "I want to do this for my agency and for the community." It provides trust for this body to know that the police department is operating with accepted best practices and policies across the state and the nation. Georgia's part of a coalition across the nation for the program. Once the chief signs that agreement with us, the process starts. Eventually, it culminates with two assessors, one team leader, one assessor. They're generally command staff members of other certified agencies across the state. They spend two days here going through all the policies and practices, making sure they match up, and they interview members of the staff. That team leader writes a report, it's submitted to myself, I review it. I then submit it to the first committee, which is the Standards Committee, which is made up of twelve individuals who, again, are senior staff members of other police departments that are state-certified. They review, if they approve it, it goes to the Joint Review Committee, which consists of four chiefs and one sheriff. They review it, they approve it, then they let me know that the agency's been approved, and I contact the agency to let them know they've done it. So, currently, there's a hundred and seventy-six agencies across the state that have achieved this milestone out of virtually almost six hundred agencies. So, I can tell you, it's not something that is just rubber stamped, it is earned, to let you know that you have confidence in the department, how they operate and function. So, my pleasure to announce this small token, this plaque, to the department and the chief for the recognition of what they've achieved. Chief, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And as the chief men- mentioned, there's also that person who's actually behind the scene, that's actually making sure that everything's in the file, that things are being coordinated appropriately. And I'd just like to issue a pack of recognition to Ms. Carrie Bennett, who actually made sure it got done.
And I think with her tenacity, I think she at least emailed me or texted me four times to make sure I was gonna be here with the correct address. But that's what it takes, so thank you, congratulations.
All right, y'all let Carrie or Candace get a good picture, so we can have something for Facebook.
If you guys will indulge us, if we can all get together for a photo. We'll try and make this quick, y'all, sorry for the delay.
Surely one of those everybody's got their eyes open.
Thanks for indulging us, boys.
All right, we had no citizens' requests, are there any council requests? Agenda approval, Mr. Taylor, will you hand it that?
Yeah, I have two items that just need to be rearranged here on the agenda tonight. Item number eight on the consent agenda, the correct amount is seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. That was a typo we caught at the work session that didn't get corrected in time for this agenda. Also, I would like to request that item number eleven, on the consent agenda, the approval of the emergency change order with Mid-South Construction, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for water system improvements in the Dove Landing area, be moved to due business number eight as we have finished that project and we can actually do an award on actual amount tonight.
So, wait a minute.
Who's gonna move, who's moving?
I'll make the motion with the changes that were mentioned.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Nathan, a second from Steve, further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up, we have a public hearing for a proposed twenty-twenty-five property tax increase. Before we start the hearing, I will read the rules for our public hearing. Public hearing will be open, then anyone interested in speaking in favor of the matter will be called to the podium, give their name and address, and limited to ten minutes total, not each. Then anyone interested in speaking against the matter will be called to the podium, give their name and address, and limited to ten minutes total, not each. Then the public hearing will close. So, with that, I'll ask Ms. Toni Jo Howard to present for us.
Hello, good evening, yes, this is our third public hearing of our three required public hearings. We were required to have the three public hearings because we advertised the rate of seven point nine zero mils, which it has been previously, but that was actually above our rollback rate, which would have been seven point seven five six mils. Just for a frame of reference, the difference between the seven point nine and a seven point seven five six mileage rate on our hundred thousand average value home is five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll now open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor. Hearing seeing none, is anyone here would like to speak in opposition? If so, please come forward, give us your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on from there, the council will make-
I'd like to make a motion to take the rollback rate.
It's, yeah. It's, it's, it's down under-
Well, let's get it over with. Move it up.
Yeah, yeah, it's in new business. We've already approved the agenda.
Y'all are capable of amending the agenda.
Do what?
Y'all are capable of amending the agenda at any time, so.
Amend the agenda, then.
I'd like a motion to amend the agenda to put adoption of a rollback rate, right, under the public hearing portion.
Second.
All right, motion from Tyson, a second from Steve, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now make the motion to take the rollback rate.
Second. For the record, you can state what that rollback rate is.
Yes.
Seven point six five. Seven point seven six five.
Five six.
Five six, what did I say? Seven point seven five six.
All right, Steve made the motion, second by Tyson, for any further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, black sign. Motion passes.
Mayor, if I'm correct, that is the first time in nine years that the city has rolled back the mileage rate.
The last time we did was in twenty fourteen.
Twenty sixteen.
Was it twenty sixteen? I knew it had been some time, yep. All right, consent agenda, Mr. Taylor.
So, we have eleven items now on the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the mayor and council work session from July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have the minutes of the executive session from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have the minutes of the mayor and council meeting from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have the minutes of the executive session from July fifteenth, twenty-five. And we have the minutes of the mayor and council public hearing, it was on August seventh, twenty twenty-five, and also the minutes of the mayor and council work session that was held on August seventh, twenty twenty-five. We had the approval of the minutes of the executive session on August seventh, twenty twenty-five. We have a bid award for the construction of sidewalk on East Hightower from Spring Street Divine Circle to Peachtree, Peach State Construction in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. This is being funded through a Transportation Alternative Program grant through the Georgia Department of Transportation. Item number nine is approval to purchase Kubota tractor for streets, water, sewer, and gas in the amount fifty-five thousand through, fifty-five thousand, seven ninety-five dollars through Sourcewell, and approve the Department of Budget Judgments to fund the purchase. On this one, they, they're just rearranging some pre, already budgeted funds to help cover this purchase of this new tractor that's needed across our various public works departments. And then item number ten is a bid award for drainage improvements for Holly Street and Sweetgum Street to Civil Construction Utilities in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the last item is an update to the fee schedule. Since the budget was adopted, there have been some other fees that have been, need to be adjusted, and so those will be modified effective tonight. Recommend approval of consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion from Tyson and a second from Teresa, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moves us to new business, Mr. Taylor.
So, new business is appointment of associate judges for municipal court, and Judge Robbie Ballard's here. Do you want to come up and kind of explain what we're doing here tonight?
Thank you, everyone, mayor, council. We thank you for your consideration and willingness to appoint Taylor Newberry and John Tony as associate judges of the Social Circle Municipal Court. We've gotten to a point to where it's become important for us to start thinking of some degree of succession, bringing in some additional judges. The calendar, calendars are bigger, and certainly having them on staff as associate municipal court judges would be beneficial to the court and to the city at large. I can say with complete certainty that I know them well, and that both Ms. Newberry and Mr. Tony will serve the city well in their new capacity as associate judges of the municipal court. So, we thank you for your consideration and approval, so. Mayor, how would you all like to do this? Would you like for them to stand here and face you all?
They can just face you at the podium, it'd be fine.
Mr. Tony, why don't we stand here, so we're not, why don't we stand there, so we can come around this way? So, the way this is gonna work is-
Rob, excuse me, hang on a second.
Mr. Ballard, sorry, Judge Ballard, we do need a vote to approve them, just for clarity sakes, and then I'll probably send a contract to Mr. Ballard's office for them to sign off on, but a vote to approve them, and then they can get sworn in.
Okay, you have to make a motion.
Second. I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Steve and a second from Nathan, further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
So, let me then restate for the record, we thank you for your consideration and approval of Ms. Newberry and Mr. Tony. It might have been a little soon to say that in the beginning, so. All right, are you ready? So, here's how we're gonna do this, I'm going to read the oath, I'm going to start with aye. You will each state your name, I'll read the oath for you so that you don't have to recite it after me in front of everyone. And then at the end, I will sign this, and, Madam Clerk, I think what I'm gonna do is have them sign the bottom of the page as well, just for a signature line. Is that all right with you?
Sure.
Fantastic, all right, are we ready? I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the Charter, Codes, and ordinances of the city of Social Circle. I will truly, honestly, and faithfully discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability without fear, favor, or partiality. Fantastic. Mr. Tony, if you would. Let me just sign at the bottom right-hand corner here. Mayor, there is a signature line here for you, so I'll ask you, may I approach?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballard, you might also want to reiterate the fact that you're not leaving immediately. You're sticking around for another year or so, I believe.
So, the mayor is correct that a part of what brought this on is what, what we have decided will be our soon retirement. Myself and my wife, Marcy Hanks, she is an attorney in our firm. We believe next summer will be the end of our, our legal careers here, and we intend to retire and move on to the next chapter. And so, it was important to me to be sure that, to, to continue to honor the most important thing to me as your chief judge, and that is to not disrupt the municipal court. All that matters to me is that it continue uninterrupted and without any hiccups whatsoever. When I leave, my contract as your chief judge will expire next summer. Sam Barth, who is currently the associate judge and my law partner, hopefully will, will apply to become your next chief judge. And at that point, he will need some, some associates to help him manage the growing caseload here in the municipal court. And so, we thought it important to start now, working with Ms. Newberry and Mr. Tony, getting them trained, sending them to the appropriate municipal court judges training, getting them acclimated to the bench, so that when I leave next summer, there will be no disruption to the operation of this court. And that has always been what's most important to us, and so that's why we're doing this, so. Any questions from anyone? No? Again, thank you very much for your consideration and approval.
Just thanks to you all for your willingness to serve.
Yep. Would y'all like a photograph with the mayor and council? Mayor, council, maybe? Is that all right?
Yeah. Judge, you do know you're not exempt from second round. One, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Got it, thank you.
All right, next we have the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five property tax mill rate.
So, yeah, council did that, so the next item is the approval of resolution of support for the EPA cleanup grant for the Mill Village. The DDA has been working on Brownfield, identifying areas of cleanup through a EPD, Brownfield grant. And they're now ready to move ahead to the next step, which is trying to figure out how to get the area cleaned up. And so, this resolution is a resolution of support for the Downtown Development Authority's efforts to seek a grant for, from the EPA for cleanup of the Mill Village.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have been talking to Mike Owens of the chairman of the DDA, as well as the property owner and his attorney, and we're trying to get worked out logistically how that's all gonna work, but there should be no hiccups.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need to approve it? Or do we-
We approve the resolution.
We approve the resolution.
Approve the resolution, yeah.
Yeah. I make a motion to have a resolution of support for the EPA cleanup. Let him get it out of my house. Steve's in a hurry this morning, right?
You in a hurry.
Got a, a motion by Nathan, a second by Steve, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes.
I remember four on the business, on the new business agenda is approval of changes to the employee health benefits program. City staff has been working hard to identify cost-effective ways to continue to provide employee health benefits to the staff of Social Circle, and this year, we've been with Cigna for the last, I think, three years, and this year, Cigna proposed a 15, 25% increase to current plans, depending on which plan you're on, and that is way over what we budgeted. And so in addition to that, staff has expressed a desire for more affordable family coverage that they weren't able to get under the Cigna plan, and so working through the Georgia Municipal Association, who the city used to have health insurance from, we realized that we're able to save approximately 75, $70,000 if we switch back to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield through GMA, and that includes a rate lock for, for the rest of this year through December 31st of 2026. Now what does this look like? It means that the new base plan will be health savings account, HSA 3300, with individual deductibles of $3,300, it'll be eligible for the HSA with a maximum out-of-pocket max of $4,500. The buy-up plan, so the buy-up plan, if you choose to get a more enhanced program, health insurance coverage, of course, the city covers for employees only, 100% of healthcare costs for the employee only on the base plan, but if you want to go up and get a better program, you can go with the POS 8062,000, that will replace our current buy-up plan. This has a $2,000 individual deductible and a $5,500 out-of-pocket max. Also, with GMA's proposal, we'll be changing our dental and vision providers, that will save between $10 and $3 a month on dental insurance, and $2 to $4 a month on vision And then we also had them price out life, AD/ND, and disability, but they were not competitive as compared with our current carrier, and so we will not be recommending any changes with that. So we recommend approval of the changes to the health benefits program.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Teresa, a second from Nathan, further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is an adoption of amended FY22 comprehensive plan. I'll ask Cody to step up and, and go over the real brief changes that we're, that we're making to this.
Okay. For the past six or seven months, myself and Ashley have been working with the North Sea Georgia Regional Commission to update the FY22 comp plan to address some discrepancies that were created when we adopted the UDC. It's been before, y'all, the past few months, we've had the rep, public hearings, and DCA just completed their 15-day review and has given us the go-ahead for the adoption. Some of the amended changes are character area, giving more defining narratives, it's created a new character area for residential villages, which addresses high-density housing versus lumping it in with neighborhood, and it's also updated the short-term work program as well, so.
Questions?
Make a motion to accept the complaint.
Second. Okay, motion from Steve and a second from Nathan, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number six is an approval to purchase approximately one-third acre from the estate of Mary Jean Barnes, parcel ID SC140404, for $35,000. This particular parcel is actually located right outside the door here. The, the lot is currently an L-shaped lot with the house facing Dogwood, if you, it's the third house, they're at the top, so it's an L-shaped lot, and so this will basically square off that lot, and then the city will have the ability to address some drainage issues with the stormwater pond, as well as possibly expand the parking area of the police department.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Teresa, a second from Steve, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have a tie vote, which means under our charter that the mayor will cast a vote, I vote that we purchase the property.
Next item on our new business, item seven, that's an acceptance of the request to withdraw the Jones Petroleum request for annexation, rezoning, variance, and special use. This has been a topic of a lot of conversation here in the community, and in working with Jones Petroleum, they have decided to withdraw the request at this time, and so this council needs to accept that, accept that request to withdraw and close out this portion of the process.
I make a motion to accept the withdrawal request.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Teresa, Ms. Second? Steve, second from Steve, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have a need for an executive session.
We got item eight.
Move one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So item eight, this is the item we moved from the consent agenda, it's an approval of emergency change order with Mid-South Construction, in the amount of $750,000 for water system improvements in the Dove Landing area. The reason why we're moving it to this portion of the agenda is because when we were talking about it during, during the work session, we were just starting the project, we weren't really sure how far we were gonna need to go to provide increased water pressure to that area. The problem that we were having was every time you opened a fire hydrant over there, the water pressure for the whole neighborhood dropped to zero, and so you may recall during the work session, we had talked about some different options we were working on, and we were starting with replacing the water line from Hightower up to Walton Court, and at the time, I think the number we were talking about was about $51,000 or so, but through that course of that discussion, we weren't really sure if that was gonna solve the problem or not, and so as you may recall, we had also had some conversation about possibly needing to add a secondary water line to serve that area. Currently, the only, there's only one way in and one way out on that water line, and if something happens, then, as we've seen here, then it affects the entire neighborhood. And so the work was completed on the first part, the extension of the line, and that actually has resolved the problem for now. The water pressure went from 1,000 gallons per minute up to 1,710 gallons per minute, and so we were able to get that done at a cost of $152,562.55. And so this will actually be an approval to approve that emergency repair, okay? And then what we're gonna do is, I've asked Robbie to continue to work with the engineers to identify the proper areas for which the secondary water line can, can come from, at which point we can get the engineering properly engineered and go out to bid on it. Okay, so we recommend approving the change order with Mid-South Construction, in the amount of $152,562.55.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Tyson and a second from Teresa, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a need for an executive session?
Very brief, one mayor for litigation.
For what?
Litigation.
Okay. We do have a need for an executive session, I will ask for a motion on that to go into discussion for litigation.
Second.
And a motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.